...at the city council at first reading of last week regarding the loitering. City prosecutor has a couple of comments and then really just wanted to write a form for the council to have a conversation prior to that ordinance coming back next week.
Thank you. Mr. Langford, please proceed.
Thank you. I was first received noticed that a council member was interested in amending our loitering ordinance on May 5th. And on May 23rd, I received a proposed ordinance. And I'm not exactly sure who drafted that. It wasn't me, but I took that ordinance that I received and I made some adjustments to it, specifically limiting the times that a person could be found lying, sleeping on a public sidewalks. And then that was amended further to reduce the time even more. And I think that's what's up for the second reading on June 20th. It's my understanding that the study session packet, there is another version of this ordinance that does away with the time constraints and deals with distances from public residences or from housing. And I believe that's what's pending right now. And I'm beholden for any questions that you have on this or my opinion, my legal opinion, whatever you like.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
So just for reference, I'm the one that requested the ordinance, which I didn't, I wrote the first one. It didn't really, it wasn't really what I wanted. Somebody asked, or I was asked the city manager to get me something that I did more like. And I think Mr. Cobre wrote the second one. Currently what he would do, he would prohibit sitting, lying, or sleeping on a public property, including but not limited to sidewalks, public right of way, and public infrastructure within one every feet of a residential property. That's the amendment currently that I plan on trying to make a motion to at the next meeting. I've had, I have had a couple of people contact me regarding this and their only concern is that they're about to sit in and possibly near a bus stop because there's not mention of a lot of the bus stops and people may sit down and, you know, they obviously wouldn't want them, you know, inside or arrested for something like that. So I may go back to Mr. Cobre and ask him what we can do about that. But, and I asked this to be moved to a study session because I just kind of wanted the other council members to input. And I was actually asking a couple of hours as we move it here. So I guess that's all I have. If there's anything else happening, thank you.
Anyone else have a discussion? Please proceed.
We already have loitering restrictions that are on the books. Do you think that this particular addition adds or do you feel as though the existing rules that we have cover this issue?
Mr. John Mayfield asked me to respond to that question in an email from, it was soon after the ordinance was presented, I think it was in early May. And my position was that the current ordering could be used to enforce these types of violations.
And so at this point, we would be asking our police that they have the latitude to intervene if someone called, somebody's sleeping on the sidewalk in front of my house and they call the police. Obviously, that's not an urgency issue, but they'd be able to come and ask the person to move the way that things are currently written?
Yes, I don't see a problem with that.
You know, I, I always worry about the idea that we're going to arrest people. We, Mr. City Manager can speak to how much room or no room that we have in our city jail. So we don't really have a mechanism to arrest and hold people for being a place that they're not welcome to be. And the hard part is, you know, arresting your way out of poverty has never been a particularly effective mechanism. It moves people. I understand, I understand that part. I really prevail upon the city to work with agencies who are trying to address the root issues that are allowing people to exist in a state of homelessness. I think that that really is the better mechanism. So I, I come back to, Mr. City Manager, do we have room right now if we were to enforce, enforce that with arrest? Do we have a mechanism for that?
The couple of questions, our couple of answers I'll give to that. One is the budget the council will vote on next Tuesday. We had to provide a recommendation in there that the council increased detention housing at $55,000 this coming fiscal year due to the increased cost that we're seeing at our various partner prisoner housing facilities. So primarily the city utilizes Johnson County, Missouri, and the Lawrenceburg area, Andrew County, up in the St. Joseph area, a few others, but those are the three that we want. Increased costs for per day housing as well as the transit cost to and from. So we would need to factor that in if there were additional rest made. That cost has gone up just doing what we're doing now. We see an additional $55,000 needed to sustain that level of daily housing. Judge Helm has been very outspoken in letting city staff know, and I believe he's contacted other members of the governing body as well, that there are capacity issues at the various prisoner housing facilities. The two I mentioned as well, the individual facility, that that's run into any manner of issues. And even once built, I think that they are already planning to be fully inventorying with the folks going through. There are various sentencing processes that there won't be capacity there. So very long with the answer, we are short on supply right now. And if there were, you know, funds to be available, certainly additional prison housing space would seem to be needed to keep up with the demand that we presently have today.
I certainly know that folks who are working in the area of homelessness are finding that as they begin to move people from the streets to housing, one of the challenges they have is paying off fines and other issues that are all barriers to people being able to move back into employment or into housing. So I really encourage us as a body to think about approaches to homelessness that work and there are models out there. There are some fantastic organizations doing amazing work. And I, I think that that is a wonderful place for us to expand our time and energy and resources. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
I'm not going to call anybody out, but I do, I have emails from city staff, motion for home organizations with city staff, that the situation I had in my district, that this ordering words would not apply to it. And that's the reason for the amendment. I'm not trying to criminalize homelessness. I'm not, you know, I don't want to have anybody arrested, but we can't have a situation in residential neighborhoods where the homeless take over that area. We just can't. And I guess it's all right until, you know, I guess especially if they're in a real system like, I don't know. Maybe this isn't the perfect solution, but it is an enforcement mechanism. And I think our police department is, is very good and, you know, they have the determination they have, just like any other thing. So anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else have a discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If I can, Mr. City Manager, do you mind if I, or Mr. Mayor, if I...
Please proceed.
...discuss with Mr. Langford that the amendment is written, says that it's illegal to sit, lie, or sleep on public property, including but not limited to. So any public property is parking lots, sidewalks. Is that how you read that? It's anything the city owns.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, was that for me?
That's for you, Mr. Langford.
Yes.
So that's out front here, it's behind the building, it's any, literally any ground of public that, if you take a nap in a public park or McCoy Park or grass, a bench, a bus stop, take your pick, it's...
It's very broad, yes.
I was looking at the, I was just trying to look up the state statute that Missouri passed. And I know that state on land is illegal. I'm not an expert on that. I think this sort of matches that. I don't know if, I don't know if you were, Mr. Councilmember Stewart, was, is that what you were going for to sort of match the state statute? Or did you look at that at all?
I did not look at the state statute. I asked for an ordinance and this one, Mr. Cobre gave me. And I, I did say I wanted it within so many feet of a residential property. So now, I mean, is a residential property mine or building?
No, I got you.
So it's for residential.
That's what you're shooting for?
Yes. I'm not, you know, that's what I'm shooting for.
Well, I got you. I understand your problem and I understand your concern and what you're shooting for. The problem is this solution does criminalize homelessness. It's a bit of a catch 22 because, no, we don't want homeless camps in our residential neighborhoods. Nobody does. But it's not going to do any good to create a taxi service to and from the jail or municipal court out of our police department. Because that's all that will happen if they did enforce it. And the 12 patrol officers we have at any given time, when we're lucky, don't need to be doing that in general. They need to be doing other, much more important things. And they do have, our ordinances do cover enough to arrest folks for loitering if it's necessary. So that doesn't solve the problem. Mr. City Manager, is there a solution to this? What's your, what's, what's your, tell you on this?
I think if there were a solution, our country would have implemented it by now.
Mr. Langford, you got a chief of police back there, we've got homeless outreach folks in the audience. I know it's frustrating. I know Mr. Stewart's frustrated. His constituents have reached the end of their rope. Certainly, we're frustrated up here. It is a tough spot to be in. Here we sit. Anybody in this room have an idea? We've got a chief back there, no chief. Well, if he has an idea.
We're not, we're not going to bring people up who have not been vetted and not been asked to appear and be here. We're not going to do that. And so if this council wants to change that rule, they can change, they can make a rule. But I'm not going to bring directors up here when they have not been asked to address an issue or not been asked to discuss an issue. So that's a ruling from the chair. And if we want to make a policy on that, I've been talking about rules for this body for quite some time. That's what I'm going to rule this evening. This is my opinion. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but when we're discussing issues such as this, where we have issues of law, compassion, I think the council's deserving to be able to ask field experts their opinion. And I don't, I don't think he's unprepared. I think that what he may be able to give to us is information that helps us get a better, more informed decision on direction. And maybe he can bring some insight that we don't see. And that's what field experts do. I would like to hear from him if possible.
I have a suggestion on this whole process that would be even more expansive than that. Is that just like the others, commission worked an entire year on that issue. And it was complicated, it was large, and it took effort and thought. This has been my concern for this body since I've been elected, that of having one individual bring something to the city council puts us in a position where we end up like this, where we have something that is not ready. This is my opinion. When we as a body are going to set a misstep and propose an ordinance, in my opinion, that ordinance has been vetted and that ordinance is ready to be approved. It is clear from this body that this ordinance, the way it stands, is not ready to be approved. Now, I am happy to be on a committee for that body. I am happy to assign a committee. I'm happy this body elected a committee to do that. But in my opinion, we need something more expansive where we can get the chief and other people involved around the table and say, and then also folks that are homeless advocates. I think it would be, it would be extremely, 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 extremely damaging to the city's reputation to approve an ordinance like this next week. And the impact that it would make on our reputation and everyone here, I think that's very important. So I'm not looking at this as, if this is a good process, if this is a good order or bad order, it's, I don't think this ordinance is ready.
But, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's the purpose of a study session, that we get to have field experts, people who are invested in these areas for topics for discussion. So that we know how to continue. I think that, first of all, I think the rules allow it and I think that it should be allowed. And that's why I'm working here in a study session. That's why it was brought to us, to study, to discuss. If we can't do that, then we'll let you make the decision.
Right. And I'm of the opinion right now that we refer this back to the council member to decide how he would like to proceed with this. I would not like to see it in its current form be brought to the city council to be finalized on a second reading in our next meeting. I just don't think it's ready because there's just too many issues on this and it's just too broad of a question. And is homelessness an issue in our city? No question. Is it important to address it? Absolutely. Is this the right format to have a lengthy discussion about it? You know, I want, I want this to be our policy from this body, that if we're going to bring people to come up to that, to that podium, that they are in fact know that they're going to be asked to do that, they're prepared to do that, and they've been, they've been given the questions we were asked for, so that they are fully vetted and prepared to have that. I want directors to be confident when they are in fact in public position. That's my position on it. If, if this body would like to help rule me, then let's make rules to that effect. But I'm ruling in the chair this evening is that I'm not going to bring anybody else up here other than Mr. Walker and Mr. Langford. So they knew that they were going to talk about this and they knew that there was going to be discussion.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, can you at least, I mean, you're assuming that the, the experts of the field are not prepared. Can you at least ask them if they are comfortable covering this topic? Should they, should they not be prepared to discuss it? You may be surprised. Yeah, but I think it's deserving of the question. I think this council deserves to pass that question. And I'm asking for you, because there's no rules against it, I'm asking that you have asked the chief if he is prepared, or maybe one of the deputy chiefs. We have a plethora of people that I would consider field experts. And I think that's what study sessions are about. And let's study the issue. We're here, day of five, we can do this a little longer, let's get it right before we go have another read. I think the rules allow it and you should allow that rule to be enforced.
Councilmember Orel gave you the deference on this, but I just want this body to know. I, going forward, will not allow a director to be brought to that podium at any time without them being informed ahead of time that this is going to be the topic, that they're on the agenda, and they're prepared with the questions that we have. I will allow it this time, this deference to you and this respect and courtesy to you. But it is my policy going forward, that's it. And if this body wants to put rules into place, I'm happy to have those discussions. And if the rules are decided by this body, or that's going to be the way we run, then I will defer to the majority. This is a democracy, but right now I do have the gavel. And with that being said, go ahead.
One more thing. If you want to change the rules, bring it to this council to vote. For right now, the council rules allow it. If you want to change that, then you need to bring it to us as a council rule change and we'll vote on it. But as, as of right now, tonight, the rules allow it.
And, and I'm saying this body going forward, I hold the gavel and I will in fact exercise that gavel. And we're not going to discuss this anymore. Mr. Walker, do you think that your chief of police is comfortable coming in to discuss this issue as we go forward?
I do.
Chief Dustman, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Adam Dustman, Chief of Police for the Indianapolis Police Department. A lot of what I have, just in the point of brevity for everybody's time, is going to harken back to what Effie O'Brell brought forward with the ARCH program earlier. I will tell you that I think his modesty and humbleness could not be more understated. He is frankly a rock star and I think that that program needs to have time to work. It has shown a lot of success in the cross-agency collaboration that is going on. But I also think it's important for the topic of this conversation, with respect to Councilmember Stewart and, and I think everyone on the council, it's not lost on any of us that someone defecating in a stormwater drain, someone creating a noise disturbance at all hours of the day or night is harmful. It's a difficult challenge. However, what I would maybe posture or posit all of you for consideration would be that is the police department the first mechanism? That should be the appropriate mechanism. I agree with Councilmember Stewart, we have an incredible police department that is full of incredibly wonderful, capable men and women that go out there and serve each and every day. But this is a deeply, deeply multi-layered social issue that faces our, all our communities. And while the police department is there, and I agree with Mr. Langford, in terms of the ordinances that are there, they are, they are there, but we also have officer discretion when it comes to how we enforce that. And as Mr. Walker pointed out, our jails are just overrun right now, both from capacity of resources, where it comes to resources that are on the street. Many of you, many, many, many of you, and I appreciate this, have taken the opportunity to ride with our community service officers. You've seen the incredibly compassionate work that officer put off and officer perform on a daily basis. But we, we talk about the outreach services. This is a multifaceted problem and it's going to take a multifaceted solution. One that is not going to be solved here tonight, one that is not going to be solved probably in a very quick quarter. I will tell you to give a shout out to the collaboration that is ongoing. Councilmember McCandless knows this all too well. The Eastern Jackson County Sheriff's Services Committee is a mark committee that is there, the American Regional Council that is there, working on these issues. Amber is at that table as well, along with multiple different agencies. And we don't have a finite solution. Otherwise, again, to Mr. Walker's point, we would have already brought it. It's going to take time, it's going to take resources to throw that, but something like the ARCH program, again, look at the title of that, Alternative Response to Community Health. It is an alternative response. It is something that is new, it is something that is very promising. We have to take that bite at the apple where we can get it. Effie O'Brell is, like I said, a very, very, very capable and passionate individual and him leading this cause and our support, I can tell you that without a doubt. I give you my word and I give the community my word. We have been supportive of this from the police department's standpoint of Mr. O'Brell and the fire department's efforts here, and we've continued to engage and be supportive of that. Major Kelsey of our Special Operations Division as well, as well as Deputy Chief Sumsette, our Field Operations Bureau Commander, taking this issue very seriously, they're very passionate about this issue as all of us are. Again, not lost on us, I'm not trying to grandstand here, make a point, but it's not lost on us what it's like to live in those neighborhoods, what I've experienced in my neighborhood as well. So we will continue to combat this issue. I just, I implore you all, please be very cautious before we send the police department as the first mechanism of a solution, rather than maybe as the last measure.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Councilmember Stewart, I have, I've got to ask for you, and it's really for Chief Dustman and City Manager and Councilmember Stewart. You certainly have the right to pursue this, I'm not going to ask you not to. But what I'm going to ask you to do is make time for a call or a meeting, if you would, if Council, if City Manager would arrange it. If you three could participate in the call, maybe get the mats, if you would. If you guys could carve out an hour or so, see if you could consider an alternative mechanism, get something in place. We don't want to damage what little efforts we have in place for our homeless folks out here. We don't want to take away your right to pursue this, Councilmember. But we also don't want to damage our efforts either. It's a simple asking, if it doesn't work, Councilmember, that's fine. But would you consider that, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So the police department was not my first mechanism. It wasn't. So anybody that thinks that, they're wrong. My first mechanism was a call to Councilmember O'Brell. And, and he got on Amber and this party was removed, or not removed, he helped her go somewhere, I think to a homeless shelter. Three weeks later, she was back. My second mechanism, I contacted the city manager, is, is there anything illegal about this? My understanding was there was not. She was sleeping on a storm drain. And order for the ordering words to apply would have to be more than one person, so it would have to be two. But I don't want to make this about one person because this could happen anywhere with any amount of people. And that's the reason this ordinance came up. Do you know how many times the police department responded? Multiple times. The ambulance was there multiple times. I don't know if your arch unit was ever there, but, but multiple times and there she sat for a month, all day, all night, throwing her trash down the storm drain and throwing God knows what else down the storm drain. And like I said, it's really not about her, it's about protecting our residential neighborhoods, protecting our property values, and keeping control of our city. Because we're not going to end up like San Francisco. I mean, you think 10 years ago, you think they thought it was going to happen there? No. And maybe this, maybe this isn't the solution. But as the city manager said, you know, if somebody came up with a solution, I guess everybody would be blaming it. So I'm sure I'll schedule a phone call. So. Okay. I want to point to that to Councilmember, and you're, you're correct. And I know it's frustrating, as people have said. I understand that there's frustration there. But I, just for the point of, of solution based, and we can discuss this in further detail with any and all of you. But there are some limitations as far as the, the law, we talked about the state law and camping on, or on state right of ways and state property. If we have an ordinance that, part of that law that was passed by the state legislature, if we have an ordinance that we cannot enforce based on resources or that we actively do not enforce, then we subject ourselves to liability and a suit from the Attorney General that would eliminate state funding. So that's another part of that conversation. Another piece of that as well is we have, as, and I'm going to defer more to Mr. Langford's area of expertise, but when you start with overly broad language or have overly broad language, we subject ourselves to what the federal courts have now done, which is make any sort of target on a targeted population, which did not happen with our panhandling because we used it as pedestrian safety and traffic safety. When you target a specific group like the homeless, it becomes unconstitutional. So we have to, we have to be very careful for that. And I'm sensitive to that, as I know you are too, when I put our men and women out there every day to enforce those ordinances. there every day to enforce those ordinances, we need to show them good faith. If, if they're enforcing something, then to keep that constitutional. So again, we have to have broader conversations, but those are important to think into, you know, in terms of the broader conversation. And again, harking back to where we started this with the ARCH program, the foundational building blocks of trust, when you talk about an outreach that you made, and they were in some sort of a response center, or transitional housing, whatever it was, for three weeks, that's three weeks of peace. And I know that seems very, very minimal to a residential area that's dealing with someone that comes back to that and back, and that's, that's all they see and become their life. But three weeks of respite is nice when you have, okay, she's back now, do we go reengage that subject? And are we able to build upon the trust that we have with those community partners and get her back on, on track? You know, oftentimes we have substance abuse and other things that are turning points of coping mechanisms because of what's going on or not going on in someone's life. And so we just have to be able to use that trust. If we put handcuffs on somebody more often than not, just as a general rule, yes, that's an important tool, and we're there as a tool. But when we put handcuffs on somebody more often than not, that is a very definitive breaking of that trust.
Please proceed.
So it's easy to talk about what a complex issue this is. Chief Dustman, I appreciate your acknowledging that. I just want to share that Councilmember Perkins and I, and a group of really thoughtful, committed folks who work in a variety of service areas, are working hard and meeting regularly on the issue of homelessness. Because arrest back in three weeks, whatever, it solves nothing for anyone. And so I just, I, I hope that the city gives us the grace of a little bit of time as we are pulling this together, working across municipalities, across municipalities, working with them in America Regional Council, trying to come up with regional solutions, figuring out where folks go that is safe for them and safe for citizens. So I, I hate to throw stones without being part of the solution, so I just would like to let you know that there are folks working on this really hard. Thank you.
Any else other discussion, other points, questions?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Please.
This goes back to what Councilmember Obarl was saying regarding the recent Missouri law that was enacted. It went to effect on January 1st of this year, and I think it's, it was House Bill 1606, according to the notes that I've made. And even before this went into effect, there was a lawsuit filed, and that's still pending. So this language is still played out. The state law that is in effect bans sleeping in state parks, sand under bridges, is very broad, and doesn't have any time limits, doesn't have any distance limits, it's just very broad, and it is being challenged right now. When I received this ordinance from Councilmember Stewart, the research that I did, I found that the Ninth Federal Circuit declared an ordinance very much like this in Boise, Montana, or is it Boise, Idaho? Boise, Idaho, you should know my states. In Boise, Idaho, found an ordinance that was broad of sleeping out in public, unconstitutional, and it was a violation of the eight amendments. The Supreme Court did not decide to hear an appeal on that Ninth Circuit decision, which says something in and of itself, because if the Supreme Court doesn't want to hear it, then that's kind of law. And so I based the amendments to Councilmember Stewart's ordinance on that, because I do think you can't have some time, place, matter, limitations. And I don't think that that in and of itself is unconstitutional. But I did want the council to know that this current state law for the state of Missouri is pending right now and is up on appeal.